Good morning. Call the Community Health and Safety Committee to order of the Kent County Board of Commissioners. It's Tuesday, September 23rd at 8:31 a.m. I see we have five commissioners present. We have a quorum, and so we'll be in our business. First, second item on the agenda is public comment. Anybody here wish to address the committee? You have up to three minutes. I don't see any, so we'll move on to item number three, which is approval of the minutes from August 26, 2025, moved by Commissioner Legrand, supported by Commissioner Boujack. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed say nay. The minutes are approved. Okay, item number four on our agendas, this are special orders of business. We have two this morning, two great community organizations. So we'll start with the Grand Rapids Public Museum, and we're joined by Dale Robertson, who is the president and CEO of the museum. Lots of exciting things going on downtown here at the museum, so appreciate your attendance this morning, and always look forward to your presentation. Dale, you may begin when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Dale Robertson. I'm with the Grand Rapids Public Museum. Do I have to turn this, or am I all set?
It should be on.
Should be on, okay. I am, you know, I'm probably the Luddite in the room, and, you know, I was born in the 50s. That's my excuse for not, for being technologically challenged, so. So yes, we've, I've been fortunate enough to be invited every year since the millage passed, and really to talk about the millage dollars and what they've meant for the institution, and how we've used the dollars for the public good, and the promises that we made when the millage was passed. If I could just maybe send just a little bit of history of how we got to this point in the millage. So we were a department, we were a department of the city since 1903, up until 2006. The city charter of 1916, under which the city still operates, requires that there be a public museum, and we are it. However, during some financial challenges, the city and the museum made an agreement in 2006 that the city would, the museum would cease to be a city department, and then the foundation board, because we had an endowment, then made an agreement, 99-year operating agreement with an option to renew for another 50, to take over the responsibilities of the museum. And that includes full responsibility for maintaining the Mayonnaise Museum Center and its grounds, but also all of the other components of it, of its, of its properties and its collections. So then in 2008, all city funding went to zero, and that's when I showed up in this job. And so we had to make our way. We had to make our way under new circumstances, outside of all of the city's structure, you know, new phone numbers, new IT, all of that stuff. And it was touch and go, frankly. And then in 2012, the Detroit Institute of Arts passed a millage in the tri-county areas, exact same situation we were in, owned by the city, lost its city funding, and it passed. And so then we began to look at that, too. And through a number of conversations, the city and county, the county generously put a countywide ballot, or countywide vote question on the ballot in 2016 along with the zoo, and it passed with 62% of the vote for a new tax. So that still is a source of pride. So then every year since then, I've been able to come back and give updates, and I appreciate that. And I, we sent the annual, we do an annual community engagement report. And we sent it electronically, but I always bring it because part of the museum is, right, it's hands-on. You gotta have something. And why, just a little aside, do we do that, right? And we do break museum rules, right, in terms of putting artifacts and specimens in people's hands. That is really unheard of in the museum world, because you're always preserving for the future. In my opinion, I am a lawyer, I may not be much of one, but I am one, and with 98% of our 250,000 artifacts and specimens donated by the people of West Michigan over 170 years, I say if we aren't putting them in people's hands, then we are not fulfilling the implied promise from which they were given. Again, this is my interpretation, which is for the education and inspiration of our citizens. So when a kid drops, a third grader drops a mastodon tooth and cracks it in half, we know what the inside of a mastodon tooth looks like, we've got 10 more, all right? But I'm willing to take that chance, right, for the results that will come from that kind of visceral interaction, which creates the stronger hooks for future information to land on. So putting something in your hand, we have these bodies, we crave active learning, all right? So that's part of why I do it. So here, every year, I'm gonna, if I come back, you have me back next year, you know, and then finally, we'll have the full set. We've done one of these community engagement reports for every single year. We started with the first year of the millage, and they've gotten progressively better, I would argue, because we've been able to leverage those dollars in a way that is beyond what I certainly contemplated, but that's because we have a very strong and dedicated, my colleagues really do embrace the mission of knowledge for all. So with that, let me just, if I can, just give a couple of updates. So I start off with the community engagement report. We say we do it annually to fill that whole 10-year story, 10-set volume, when we're all done. But part of what the result is from the millage, and I mentioned this when I was able to speak in front of the millage subcommittee, and the paper picked up the quote, and I'm glad about it, because it said, "The millage changed everything." And it did. It allowed us to make investments, investments in programs, investments in people, we were able to hire education, our teachers that are all certified teachers. Now we create education curriculum-based lessons with pre and post work, we utilize all the artifacts and specimens. We just had a really nice opening a couple of weeks ago for this mastodon, a mastodon that we dug up, and really with the help of Ken Yonker, who was running a culvert project just over the Kent County line. That entire extraction was led by our own science curator himself, a PhD, and he's a paleontologist and a geologist. But for the millage, we would not have been able to add that kind of expertise. We haven't had a science curator in years, since we were part of the city. So be able to unbox and bring out that science collection is critical, because we are history, science, and culture. So I give that as just an example of how we've been able to invest and done it strategically and purposefully around the millage. So what happened with all of that? Well, we, our programs were so successful that actually we began to turn school groups away. We're just out of room. And so we serve nearly 40,000 students annually, and so we needed to expand if we're going to continue to fulfill that mission. And then where there was the, I guess the river's that way. Yeah, so then with the, with the work to put in the rapids under the GR Forward, City of, Grand Rapids GR Forward Master Plan, we were given the assignment to be the Education Interpretation Center for all things doing with water and water systems. And so the combination of that led us to, we really need to work on this expansion project. So we began to work on that. And so I'd like to give a little bit of an update of what's going on, because it is under construction. If you look at it today, this is not what it looks like, but this is what it will look like, ideally. And I would like to point out just a couple of things that I think are really important. So there are terraces and ramps, and that is purposefully designed to allow people to have access to the river, whatever level it's at. The terraces, though, also serve a purpose, because you can see how they go back, of pulling the banks of the river back, which will help mitigate in flood situations. Now ideally, you want it everywhere, right? So but we will be able to have some impact on our own property by designing it that way. The other thing that I will say, too, is that I felt very strongly about this, is the ramp systems are beyond ADA, the originally designed ADA, ours are beyond ADA, and we're only confined by the, by how much, by our property lines, otherwise they would be even a less of a ramp, because we want to make sure we have that full accessibility. So these are just a couple of shots. This other side is, a couple of things I'd like to point out here, we are a museum, we're a learning institution, so you might see down in the lower left corner, there's a retaining wall, we just can't have a retaining wall. It's a geology wall. And now it doesn't have all of the geological strata, but it's got about six, and it'll be the actual stone. And so there'll be labels, there'll be QR codes, there'll be ways to get deeper into that, and it's designed to be used by the general public, all the way up to first-year geology students at Grand Valley State University. You also might notice, it's kind of hard to see, but we have separated the carousel from the building, meaning that we would have to walk through a corridor up into the carousel. That corridor has been taken away. The roof part is still there, so we can have a second floor walkout. But that's because there is a seven-and-a-half-mile loop as part of the whole Greenway Project, seven-and-a-half-mile loop downtown that then connects going out to the Lake Michigan and up north, and it calls for a uniformed trail and specification, so it goes right past our building. It would be wrong to force people around the carousel, so we took it apart. It'll all be snowmelt. We're from Michigan, we can go 15 feet, all right? And so we lock in, and we are part of that. But the good thing is, it also allows the carousel to be open when the museum's not, and we designed the whole, redesigned the whole new pavilion, because it gave us that opportunity. And that is another totally accessible space, in addition to change of the carousel, where there is a chariot that's been removed, a new one is being hand-carved, so the first time in the carousel's 97-year life, a wheelchair will be able to get on the carousel. So all part of these pieces, we fit together. But the outside's just not it. This is, this is a rendering, we are totally redoing the Native American, the Anishnaabik, the original people this place exhibit. There's a committee been formed with representations and invitations to all 12 federally recognized tribes, plus our own Grand River bands of Ottawa Indians. The group that they formed is called Estajik, meaning "we who create." And so this is an entirely new design, it will be these most technologically advanced, yet also using artifacts and specimens. It will tell a new story in a new way. The main theme is "we are still here," and that's covered in the first part, and then the rest of it is broken up into seasons that will share traditional teachings and learnings that are still of benefit and knowledge today. So that will open about this time next year. The streets of old Grand Rapids are also being reconfigured. Part of the expansion plan will have a new west-side school assembly and entrance, so we are taking the opportunity to redo the streets in a, in a, in a new way, taking out some traditional shop, but adding some things in, but also finishing off the second floor. If you've been to the streets, you probably didn't know there was a second floor. Well, there is, it'll be finished off. It will be a, we'll put up there a, like a replica of the first museum, which was actually in the Central High School, J.C. Craig's Barber Shop, which is an African-American-owned barber shop, and the first one in the city to use electricity. And so that'll be the two main things, and the dentist's office on the second floor. The other part of the project, too, revolves the archives, involves the archives. And so that is the old museum building, which is now the high schools, the part on the, on the left, the rest there are the archives, and county archives are held there, city archives. We take up about 85% of it. And that's another thing that we began to do, is began to open up the archives for use for schools and colleges, universities, researches, and even collectors' clubs. If you've been through a tour of the archives, and I'd love to take you through if you would be interested, you know, give me an hour, but it'll take an hour and a half, because you're going to find something that you didn't know you were interested in, and you're going to want to be interested in it. But this will allow us then, through, through creating a space with classrooms and lab space, where you can be able to go through, pick out artifacts or specimens, take them into a room, and then get further into it. So for instance, we have 200 quilts. When the quilting club comes through, they want to see some, but they need a place to take them out and look at the stitching and all of that, right? So you want to order the furniture design class from Kendall. So that's what this will, this will facilitate. It'll also facilitate school groups. The Public Museum School has a class called curation, and we're looking to expand it to others, where they go, they go in the archives, they pick an artifact or specimen, and they take, until you're marking period becoming an expert on it. Why is that good? It's sustained thinking, it's in-depth thinking, it's interdisciplinary connections, and then part of it is then they have to create and present, so that's communications. But probably the most important thing is confidence. You know, we can spend an entire life not being an expert on anything. As a high schooler, you are an expert, right? And, and we know in this world, of all the changes that are going on, coming out with just some critical thinking skills, and the confidence in what you've accomplished is, I think, an enormous benefit for any student. And that's an important part of why we, why we do it. So that's, that's the major, I mean, I got nothing else. And that's the major update. So happy to answer any questions and go wherever you want to go.
Great, thank you, Dale. Always appreciate your presentation, and couldn't think of a better leader and ambassador for the museum over the last, I don't know, almost 20 years.
Yeah, thank you.
So, and when is the, so what's the construction timeline?
Boy, that's...
I know, it's kind of a loaded question.
It's the slide.
You're right. But just, just the framework of completion.
So we expected that the riverfront would be done now. And so it's ideally maybe yet this fall, depending on the weather, early 2027. Work is going to begin on a elevator on the south lawn while the trades are still here. We hope to, in the spring 2026, get going on the west side, the new school assembly, and then finally, near the end of 2026, summer or fall, then that's when the north lawn portion, and that'll essentially wrap it up. The other exhibits that I talked about inside, the streets should be open about this time next year, too. So that, that's the ideal, but say we thought that we would be, riverfront would completely be done by now, so there's still some delays of, I mean, really what's being held up is you can't get some piece, you know, iron girder or something, and nothing can happen until that comes. So that's been just some of the issues.
And did I read a public announcement on maybe you moving on at some point?
Correct.
Okay. What's the timeline on that? Remind me.
So thank you for that. So I, you know, I just felt with the, with the county creating the millage, sub-millage review subcommittee, and since then, you're looking at the next 10 years, right? Should it get on the ballot and all that, that I, I just felt the right thing to do in full transparency, full disclosure, when you're talking about the future, is to announce before the committee had its first meeting. So you don't get into these meetings and, you know, say, "Oh, by the way, I'm not going to be there," and say, "Well, why didn't you tell it?" You know, no, I felt it was the right duty to announce that, so there's, everyone knows, there may be somebody else in this job in 2027, good. Stay through, try to work to get to the proper ends with the expansion campaign, and then ideally earning a spot back on the, on the ballot. And, you know, it's this line, some of you may remember Don Main, who was president at Davenport, he was one of the people that, you know, you know, thanks be to God, he took a liking to me when I got in town, you know? And said, you know, "The time to go," because when you've got about 75, 80, maybe 85% done of what you want to do, you stay too long, that's the law of diminishing returns. It's time, it's just time.
All right. Well, someone will have big shoes to fill, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Any commissioners have, Commissioner Boujack?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Dale, you're always an enthusiastic presenter, and we certainly appreciate, you know, your enthusiasm for what you do and, and all you've done for the museum. I was there for the grand opening of the remodel, and excited to see all of the improvements. You used a word early on, saying that part of your mission, or part of the mission of the museum is to inspire. And I have to say that every single time that I've been to the museum, I have found it inspirational, and I always look for things to do that are inspirational. I just wanted to thank you for all that you've done and all that's going on there.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, that, that's, that's the mission.
Yep. Commissioner Morales.
As I say, I kind of echo Commissioner Boujack's words, and, you know, say, "Thanks for the work that you've done. I've had a great pleasure just hearing about, like, your passion for the museum, and I like that you can not only look at the big picture, but also look at details within that big picture, and see the entirety of the thing without losing, you know, those details that make it so important and so special. So thank you for your work, and thanks for your passion."
Thank you, appreciate that, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Dale, appreciate it, as always.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Lance Warner from the Kent District Library. And I don't know, did, Peter didn't make it this morning?
No, he had a scheduling pickup.
Oh, no worries.
That's all right.
Come on up, Lance, we're glad, we're glad you're here, so.
Well, good morning, everybody. My name is Lance Warner, I'm the director of the Kent District Library. I just want to take a moment to thank all of you for all the service that you do. On behalf of the county, I am a proud county resident. This is a great place to live, and a lot of that has to do with the leadership that happens in this room. So thank you so much. I'm here to present on 2024, even though we're kind of getting long in the tooth in 2025, so some of this is a little dated, but my apologies. But 2024 was a great year for the Kent District Library. We won the national medal, which is the highest honor you can receive in the industry. We also gave out, as you recall, the year before, in 2023, we had won the Klein Award, which came with a $250,000 cash award. We distributed that to some building projects, the municipalities that were doing building projects, and then used a portion of it to start a scholarship fund. So in 2024, we gave out the two, or gave out two scholarships for $5,000 apiece, not taxpayer money, it's money that was actually winnings. And one of those scholarships went to a traditional student, and one of the scholarships went to a non-traditional student, so we were really excited about that. Circulation was, was up slightly over the year before. In 2024, we circulated 7.82 million items, and our visits were up 7% in 2024. We had 2.4 million visitors. And I saw an article recently that the Henry Ford Museum only gets 1.8 million visitors a year, so I was feeling pretty good about 2.4 million visitors. It's nice to have people come, coming in. eBook circulation was up 17%, and we had over 320,000 people at our programs in 2024. We experienced a 14% increase. So there was a lot to be excited about. I think the thing that I'm most excited about, proud of in 2024, and again here in 2025, is the number of meals that we gave out in cooperation with Feeding America to kids during the summer. Summer food insecurity continues to be an issue, continues to be a growing issue. In 2024, we gave out over 23,000 meals to kids as part of the summer food program, and this year, we gave out over 28,000 meals to kids as part of the summer food program. Now, if you've been reading the news, you, you've probably read that literacy is down across the country, and Michigan is 44th in the country with respect to literacy rates among children. In fact, I recently read something that 31% of fourth graders nationally are actually reading at grade level. So summer reading is really, really important, and one of the things that's true, too, is that kids that are hungry are not really well-positioned to engage with a service. And so we kind of look to Manslow's hierarchy of needs and recognize that if kids have food, then they're better situated to utilize the service that we provide. And so part of the summer food program is to incentivize kids coming in, getting something to eat, and reading with their families, and creating a culture of literacy at their homes, preferably. In fact, our favorite thing to see is parents coming with kids and read to their kids when they're young, and that, that does make a difference. And early childhood literacy and literacy in general among children is important for success for those kids going forward academically and in the workplace. And so that's something that we, we try to, try to facilitate and enable. But since the beginning of our program, I believe we started in 2018 or 2019, we've given out over 100,000 meals to kids in the summertime, and, you know, it's, it's something we're going to continue to do. We're kind of looking into some other things as well, in trying to meet the food insecurity where we see it. It's kind of a strange thing to talk about during annual report, but you might or might not know that we have Narcan in our branches, and last Friday, I Narcaned somebody back to life at our Byron Center branch. I went to the bathroom, and somebody had overdosed, and I looked down, and there was a man laying there with glazed-over eyes, didn't appear to be breathing. And I ran out, and I yelled to call 911, and got the Narcan, and we administered Narcan and emergency services showed up, and I shook the guy's hand, because I thought he was going to die, and when he didn't die, I felt like, "I better shake your hand, because you can touch the other side there for a second, perhaps." And so I think it's important, you know, we take people as we find them, and being able to react in those moments and help people out, I think, is important. I'm glad that we have that resource. We also have AEDs and first aid available, and, you know, since we started that program, we've saved five lives with our first aid efforts as well. So I think kind of taking people as you find them and being able to react in those moments is really, really important. One of the things that I think is most frustrating, and a lot of things that kind of drove these decisions, were situations where something would happen in the library, and we, we didn't have the skills or the tools available to help people in the moment. There's nothing worse than feeling powerless in a moment, watching someone suffer, and not being able to help them. And so because of events that had happened in the past, we had made some decisions to have these services available, and I feel blessed to have had an opportunity to interrupt somebody's very bad day. But anyway, I had to share that. It was one of those unbelievable moments, you know, go out and visit the branches regularly, and normally I'm not saving somebody's life. But sometimes, you know, you have to step up. And anyway, but overall, things are really good. We actually won another national award again this year for the second time. We won the National Library Service Award for our Talking, Braille, and Book Services. We'd won it in 2015, Talking, Braille, and Book Services, of course, are services for people that are struggling with vision issues, and that continues to be a really robust program. That program actually covers four different counties, and we're the regional provider. But all in all, things are good. We really appreciate all of your support. We're excited about the branch projects that are progressing nicely in Walker and in Rockford, and we are, we are glad, we think we're going to be able to increase those, well, we know we're going to be able to increase, the branches are increasing in size, but we don't believe that our labor costs are going to go up, because we're redeploying the resources. In fact, our labor costs, or our budget this year, are just under 60%. On average, for libraries, it's 75 to 80% on labor costs, so we're actually really beating the industry standard, so we're proud of that. We really want to make sure that we're trying to put every dollar that we can towards service, and labor costs are also towards service as well. But anyway, it's a great honor to serve the community, and we certainly appreciate all of you and all the municipalities. I certainly appreciate my friend Dale, who does a remarkable job in the museum, is one of my family's favorite places to go in the county, and I'm so proud of the museum. I tell people to visit the museum when they're in town, Dale. Do you tell them to come see the library? No pressure, no pressure, Dale. But anyway, it's, this is a great place to live, and again, it really comes down to, it takes a village, all the hard work that you do, and all the hard work that municipalities do, and all the different entities in the county, and all the people, and the pride in the community. It really comes together and makes Kent County kind of a remarkable, magical place. Anyway, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Lance, appreciate that. And thank you for stepping up. Was this this last Friday?
Yes.
My goodness.
Yeah.
I don't think, that's not in your official duties as the director...
I don't think that's not in your official duties as the Director of the Kent District Library, but you know, it's, I guess.
If there's dragons, we'll fight dragons. I mean, I don't care. I mean, we do what it takes.
Feeding kids and saving lives and then, you know, books and eBooks and all kinds of stuff. Can you remind me, so obviously we've got the KDL system. City of Grand Rapids has their own system that's supported by a millage. How many district libraries do we have in our system for the Kent District Library?
We have 20 different branches and the Kent District Library serves 27 different municipalities and 17 school districts. In the county, there is the Grand Rapids Public Library, which is a distinct standalone entity, as is Sparta and Cedar Springs. We do work together because we're all part of the same library cooperative and so they're sharing the materials. And, you know, we try to partner when the opportunity arises.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you Chair. I had a question regarding the structure of the KDL. I think I recognize that the library system was created due to a state mandate. Is that correct?
No. So, in, the Kent District Library was the Kent County Library once upon a time. And then I believe all the libraries in the county were part of the county system, including Grand Rapids. I think in the early 90s, I want to say 1994, the county decided to dissolve the county library system and create a district library. I don't know what the rationale was at the time. I presume that a lot of it has to do with the fact that the library can be separately funded and that the library's funding didn't fall under the county's millage cap. I'm guessing. I don't have any. So, it was at that time that the county decided to do that. The municipalities were all signatories to an agreement, which created a new autonomous entity, the Kent District Library, which exists via contract in sort of cooperation between the municipalities. And, and that's all established under the District Library Establishment Act. There are still county libraries in the state, although there are not as many county libraries as there once was. I know that like the, for instance, the Muskegon Area District Library was the Muskegon County Library. And that was, I was actually part of that transition from a county to a district library setup back in the early 2000s because I was working at the state at the time as the library law specialist. And so, there's a multitude of reasons why it happened. So, it's, it's not uncommon to see that sort of transition from a, from a county system to a district library system.
Okay.
Yep.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the question.
Commissioner Legrand.
You Chair. That was a little history lesson there. We're getting so much today. I want to thank you for your commitment to this holistic view of, of your job at the library. I really feel like you are just creating a real space across the county for human flourishing and you're taking all aspects of that seriously. So, I really appreciate that and your commitment to literacy and family literacy. I know that you have a good cooperation with the Literacy Center of West Michigan, which just does amazing work empowering, you know, people who live here. So, it's really, thank you for all of that. I do have a question and I, I'm just curious about, you've done such a great job keeping up with electronic and, you know, non-book materials. I'm just curious, do you still see a lot of books circulating? Is there an increase in that or do you see decrease in books? I'm just wondering what you see from your side of the.
Actually, our, our physical materials are actually creeping up slowly. It really depends from place to place. Overall, nationally, people are checking out less books and people are actually buying less books. The publishing industry is in trouble. And that is because people, because of social media and how we interact with information, how it's different, less people are reading books. I mean, it's a big commitment of book, right? Whether it's an electronic book or an actual physical book. So, the publishing industry overall is actually kind of really struggling right now. The Kent District Library though, we actually are creeping up. Obviously, we're circulating more electronic materials than physical materials, but both things are slowly creeping up. They're either steady or they're creeping up. And I think that really is because of the work that the librarians do and the book groups. And we, we have big events like Turning the Page where we bring in national level authors. We make, there's excitement around it. And I also think Kent County in general has a greater value around literacy than a lot of our neighboring counties or even counties throughout the state. In fact, I mean, I go other places. I talk to the library directors about their circulation statistics and how things are happening. And we're kind of an anomaly and I really attribute that to the sort of culture of the county and the value that we place on learning and on the family unit and on creating a structure where things like literacy are important. You know, I would say that Michigan might be 44th on, and I don't have the numbers in front of me. Michigan might be 44th on childhood literacy for 4th graders or whatever it might be. But I would be surprised if Kent County was 44th as well. And so, we're going to continue to push that and push the importance of it. And I think that circulation will continue to creep up for us slower than it used to. Even electronic circulation is even slower than it used to be. But we also, just as, as an aside, we decided to, a lot of my library colleagues are spending a great deal of money investing in electronic materials. And we have a problem with making that big of a commitment to electronic materials because of licensing agreements. The library doesn't actually own the materials. We're essentially renting them, which is a problem, spending, you know, a bunch of money on a rental and there's nothing there to show for it long term. And so, we try to be very balanced with our spend on physical materials, electronic materials. And like I said, I'm, I'm happy to report that physical circulation is also going up.
Well, that's great. I'm one of those old fashioned people who really likes an actual book. I like to have things in my hands, as Dale said about the museum. So, anyway, thank you so much for your work. I'm just, I'm so impressed with the quality of the library services with the communications that I get because I get all the newsletters and your presence in the community at community events that I see. So, wonderful job and I thank you.
Thank you so much. It takes a village. It takes a village. We exist to further all people through kindness, empathy and love. We meet people where they're at.
Over in my neck of the woods that I represent, we have a relatively new library in Ada. Amy Van Anil Library. And the director there, his name escapes me, Scott?
Yep.
He reached out to me and invited me for a tour and I did that. It's beautiful, a community center there and library and doing a great job there. And of course, we've got the Eagle Heart Library in Lowell. That was a generous gift from the Eagle Heart family years ago. But so, great organizations and community assets for sure. I think Commissioner Morales had a comment or question?
Yeah. I also thank you for your work. As a former library employee and, you know, that's sort of where my love for public service kind of began. So, I appreciate that you're doing the best to make these third spaces, you know, just as welcoming, as engaging as possible and making sure people have, you know, somewhere to go. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. I think that's everything. Thanks again Lance. Appreciate all your work. Keep up the great work.
Yes, thank you and likewise. And I'll see you tonight. God bless you all.
Okay, sounds good.
Good night.
Okay, we'll move on to item number five, which are, which is our agenda items for this morning. Our first one is item 5A from the Administrator's Office. It's the Contract for Medical Examination Examiner Services. Administrator has some comments on that. Please.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this journey started, what, three and a half years ago as we contemplated space first. And we had a design of a new medical examiner office. And then we visited the Kalamazoo Medical Examiner's Office. It's embedded in the Western Michigan University Med School and began to have a different vision of what the service might be in the future. Well, then our contractor firm for gosh, 50 years, informed us about a year ago that they were no longer going to provide the service at the end of September of this year, which kind of put the whole situation right on the front burner. And so, we had had a little bit of discussion with Michigan State University, but began talking in earnest with Dr. Joyce DeYoung, who is the Dean of the Medical, the DO Medical School in Lansing. And it turned out she was the one who set up the, she was a medical examiner in Kalamazoo and a professor at Western Michigan University Med School and had set up that whole situation there. So, we've worked, you know, I have to say, it's been an interesting year because when you're dealing with big institutions like a university and a hospital and it wasn't sure we'd get here, but we did. And I'm really excited for the future. We have a total budget of $2,075,665 for medical examiner. Of that, 700, the MSU contract will be for $703,404. That's an increase of about 70,000 over last year, or 75,000 over last year. And that represents, we had increased the budget because when we were first drafting the budget, it looked most likely like the county was going to hire the docs and that that was going to be an in-county service. And so, the budget does reflect the amount that we would contract with Michigan State University for. I think it's really exciting and that's, you know, as we, as we toured the Western facility about a year ago now. You know, for just one example, currently we ship all of our cold case remains to Lansing for evaluation. As we toured the Western Michigan facility, there was a whole room set up for cold case and they have a forensic pathologist right there doing the work with the remains to try to help figure out what happened to these individuals. That will all be in-house and that specialty will be present to do that kind of work. We will soon unveil or propose a site for the medical examiner. Until such time as we would move into a different facility, Corwell has made it clear that we're welcome to stay there. And so, we're able to, I think, keep the service going at a high level. The docs would be, will be hired by Michigan State. At least one says he's close to retirement. At the time they would decide to move on or retire, their successors would also work for Michigan State in the future. So, I think this brings great, a great additional service and also solidify. And I think from Michigan State's perspective, they're poised to, to do a lot of great things in this field as well. I was stunned to learn there's somewhere in the neighborhood of 440 to 500 pathologists who do autopsies in the entire nation of 340 million people, which seems a little thin. I think we could use that old Quincy show, you know, to try to inspire young folks to want to be pathologists. I see the ones that are smiling. I'm dated with that, by the way. That's an old show. Sorry.
Never saw it.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Never heard of it.
But the older folks in the room will appreciate that.
I'll look up Quincy. Yeah. Okay, so it's a $703,000 contract with MSU?
Yes.
Okay. And then we've, this, this $2,755,000 is in the budget?
Yes, the 703 is part of the $2,750,000. The balance goes to Corwell and to pay staff that does the labs and that sort of thing.
Okay, got it. Commissioner Legrand.
Yeah, so do we then anticipate this will be roughly this amount? I mean, it's going to be an annual contract?
Yes. Oh, thank you for that. The first, the first year is a one-year contract. There's just a number of things that we want to talk about and work on. And but the next one, I think, will be a multiple-year contract. Yes.
That makes sense. All right.
And I should say too, that every four years, the board names the medical examiner, even though that person has been working under a contract with someone else and gets paid by us paying the contractor, not that person directly.
But we have an identified county medical examiner.
Yes, Dr. Cole will continue as our medical examiner and Dr. Start will be our deputy medical examiner. Ottawa County approved this contract last week and they have the reverse. Dr. Start is their chief medical examiner and Dr. Cole is their deputy chief medical examiner.
Got it. Okay. Anybody else? Commissioner Hennessy.
So, this will be, first, I assume will be several motions to this whole program?
I, I would see.
The contract itself?
No, this would authorize signing of the, it's the same contract that MPS had, which just changed over to MSU. And so, this would authorize entering into that contract per review of the council. And then the other, but the other thing we hope to bring to you very soon would be the, the building that we would suggest that we purchase and then outfit. We've toured the facility with MSU. They love the facility. So, I think it's just a matter of bringing that to you, talking it through and seeing if there's support to do that.
So, would, go ahead.
Since this whole medical examiner change and looking for a building, you know, started way after my tenure. I'm really pleased that we're at this point. And it certainly has taken a lot of examination over the last year or more to, you know, to get us to this point and looking at all the options that are available. And so, I'm really pleased with the way this is done. And I know Dr. Cole would appreciate having something done before he does choose to retire at some point in the future.
Right.
So, do we have a motion?
Not yet, but I, just one more quick question. So, when we have, when we identify space down the road, would then we continue the contract most likely or will we have our own in-house people? Or would we still consider those options?
We're still considering those options.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to adopt the. The agenda item 5A, moved by Commissioner Hennessy, supported by Commissioner Legrand. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to item 5B, which is a Purchase of Development Rights 2025 Application Scores and Ranking. Administrator Vanderburg.
Yes. And we have, oh, let's see, here we go, purchase. So, this, this basically comes up periodically. We actually created the Purchase of Development Rights Program during my first tenure with Kent County. The board appointed a special committee. It was the Urban Sprawl Subcommittee of the Board of Commissioners. And this was one of the recommendations that they made to create a PDR program. If you, if we could, Mr. Chair, I'd love to have Haley Stickman, our Community Development Coordinator, speak as to some of the changes in the criteria. But the criteria comes up periodically as the committee that oversees this deems that some changes are necessary.
Good morning Haley.
Good morning.
If you can give us kind of a brief overview, that'd be great.
Yeah, thank you. Good morning. Thank you Al. So, the, this criteria has typically been brought to the Board of Commissioners on a yearly basis. The last time that changes were really made were, were in 2021. And since then, we've, those changes were made in 2021 to align these, these score and ranking more with our state and federal entities for which we apply for funding. And so, it was kind of pared down a little bit and the criteria around like prime soils, whether or not properties are next to other preserved land to kind of make sure that we're creating large blocks of land and areas and not necessarily just within different pockets within the townships. So, those are some of the criteria that were, were looked at and maybe changed a little bit. And that was really to align with the state and federal standards in which they rank and score the applications. So, that was done in 2021. There haven't been any changes since 2021, but that was typically still brought back to the Board of Commissioners. In 2024, when this was brought back to the Board of Commissioners, we actually approved the score and ranking for 2025, 2026 and 2027. So, the board, the Board of Commissioners will not see the scoring and ranking itself come back until 2027. And at that time, the Agricultural Preservation Board may look at that and make and suggest changes or continue with what we have. What the Board of Commissioners is looking at today is we take all the applications that we received, which we received six this cycle. That cycle ran from January through April. And so, what we do is we take those applications and the information that we receive from those landowners. We score and we rank those properties. And then we take that to the Agricultural Preservation Board to review and to ultimately approve that and make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. So, that's what the Board of Commissioners, that's what's in front of you today. You have the properties that we received, the scores that they received for each category and then their overall ranking. And we anticipate that the top two score, scoring parcels will be put through the preservation process to ultimately apply for state and federal funds. That will likely happen starting in February when we understand when the federal and state applications will open. Happy to answer any other questions.
So, the primary source of funding is state and federal funding. Are there programs both at the state and, and at a federal government, US? Are there programs both at the state and, and at a federal government USDA or whatever that has funds available for the purchase of development rights for states?
Yes. Yeah. So those are grant funds that are available through MDA and available through the USDA, their NRCS offices.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to add a little bit to that, there are some townships that do supply a little bit of funding. So that's something, these applications, the top two scoring applications, we go through and request township approval. So the township has reviewed the top two applications. They've said, yes, we agree. Or we say that, yes, they are, they would like to see these move forward. And then we ask them if they're willing to contribute any funds. And so I believe it was Tyrone Township that has offered to supply some funds. So we do see that take place as well.
Okay. Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a question about the scoring for proximity to other protected land. And I was interested when we heard from, I think it was from Danny Heffron, that one of the challenges for ongoing agriculture in Kent County with development happening in various places is that suppliers need a certain density of farms to, to make it worth their while to keep supporting them before they just close up or move. And is, is the proximity question related to that or is it more related to corridors of undeveloped land? Is it strictly about not being developed or is it, you know, trying to promote agricultural use by keeping more agricultural land together?
Yeah, I think it's, it's the latter. So, you know, what the Agricultural Preservation Board talks about in those priorities is creating those large blocks of land to support those processors and producers in our rural areas. So yes, that is essentially, you know, why that question, why we give weight to that question and that question is prioritized at the state and federal levels as well.
Thank you. Yes, you're welcome.
Commissioner Merchant.
Thank you. What townships are the top two selections from?
So I believe we're looking at Tyrone and Lowell.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Haley.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion moved by Commissioner Morris, supported by Commissioner Merchant to approve agenda item 5B. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Now we'll move on to item six, and that's miscellaneous. Any commissioner has any miscellaneous comments this morning? Commissioner Hennessy.
This is late September and the first time we have this three-committee structure. Are we going to have a process of looking at how this is working and the distribution? Can you explain that to us a little bit?
Sure. When the board approved this, the commitment was made to do a review of this after a year's under our belt. And so I imagine that we'll work with Chair Green to put together a process to do that, to get input from commissioners and to talk about any potential changes or improvements.
I mean, this will be done after a year. Is there any chance of doing this so that you can begin the year with any changes that you might want to see?
Yeah, I think we can do that. It shouldn't be too extensive. So yeah, we could maybe in November start doing. I'll talk to Chair Green about that and see what he wants to do.
Good. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner Morales.
Yeah. The governing board of the Kent County Community Action is hosting a luncheon just to kind of like celebrate and elevate the work that they're doing and also to hopefully raise some funds. So I would like to formally invite you all and I'll be sending out like a graphic once I have that. But that will be on October 16 from, starting at noon, just noon to one, at the KCCA building on Jefferson and MLK. So I hope to see some of you there.
Great. Our prize kicked off last Friday. Hopefully people can get down and check out all the cool exhibits. And we have a board meeting on Thursday morning. So without any other.
Stay with the county tonight.
And stay with the county tonight. I forgot about that. My goodness. Hopefully, hopefully Chair Green, hopefully Chair Green's ready. That's good. I did want to recognize undersheriff Brian Muir is here. Always appreciate his attendance in the sheriff's office, being here. Seeing no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, moved by Commissioner Merchant, supported by Commissioner Morales. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We are adjourned.